I want to call to order the special city council meeting for the city of Dunellen on June the 7th. Do we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
We believe it is solely for our citizens and citizens.
We would like to lead us in a pledge, or excuse me, a prayer. If not, we'll have a moment of silence. Amen. Um, before I get started, I want, before I get started, I want to make a couple of announcements. Again, this meeting is solely for the short-term rental ordinance that has been worked on for quite some time. Um, and if you have any other issues, I hope you could hold those to the next meeting, which will be a week from tonight. A couple of other things, there's an exit at the back of the door and one off to your right. And if there's an emergency, please be careful on exit that way. I would like to point out there is a small blue car sitting out in the parking lot that is taking up two parking places. I've asked the police to ticket that automobile, so if it's yours, I'm sorry. Uh, now. I guess we need to do roll call first, right? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Inskeep.
Here.
Councilperson Mendonza.
Here.
Councilman Lehman.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage, present. And we have Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk.
Here.
And City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
Is Chief here?
He just walked out the door. He was on the phone, but he was here.
Uh, Chief Gaglio is here. He's just not in the room at the moment. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, May 31st, 2023.
Okay, again, this meeting is specifically for short-term rental. Um, we will have public comments at the end of the meeting tonight, not at the beginning. Um, so if you would keep your comments and hold on to them, and we will have time at the end. The other thing is this meeting will have a time limit. Um, very candidly, our marathon meeting on Monday night. Um, the staff and I decided that we would stop the meeting tonight around seven o'clock. Anything we do not get covered tonight, we will have another meeting and finish this ordinance. Okay, and this ordinance, uh, again, was brought to us by the planning zoning committee who worked quite diligently on it for a number of months. Um, and there's been two or three versions of this put together. But we're gonna, I believe, start with the last one that they had worked on. Uh, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Rex Lehman, uh, because I've asked him to kind of run this meeting, uh, and get into all the details. So Rex, you can take it away.
Hey, good evening. Um. I had a meeting tonight with the city attorney before we started the meeting, and he clarified for me what we can work on, what we, and what we, not what we can work on, but avenues of what's going on pertaining to this. So my idea tonight was, in discussion with the last meeting, is since there's already been an, and the planning committee's had it, this would be our chances, the council, to go back through it and see any changes. And, and as I read through some of the changes from the planning, from the planning committee, I asked the city attorney tonight what his opinions were on them, and I'll be sharing those, and I've asked him to intervene at times. So tonight we'll be going through it to get a better idea of the ordinance that we want to try to put together to satisfy everybody. So do y'all want to start with the first page?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be leaving this meeting, I'm leaving this meeting in protest because I feel that this ordinance is unnecessary, and we're venturing in the territory where the city of Dunellen does not belong. Now, I'll try to make this as short as possible, let the public know our legal fee so far for this ordinance is $9,240. Now. I also know that we have a citizen who has already announced, and I have spoken with him quite relentlessly time, that's going to sue us. It's gonna happen. There have been lawsuits in many cities. Um, a citizen of Dunellen who's in the business sent us an example from New York City. I went online and I found many large cities, Austin, Sacramento, Wilmington, North Carolina, who had lost lawsuits in court because they tried to enforce ordinances that are almost tap for tap for these. And some of these are as basic as constitutional rights. Okay, the short-term rental business is already regulated by the state of Florida by legislated statutes. The money that is paid by the people who own these short-term rental businesses, it does not go to the city of Dunellen. It goes to our tax collector of Marion County. How much is sent back to us? Anybody here want to offer a number?
Zero.
Yes, zero. The only thing we get is when our arts council, I'm sorry, our Rainbow River Arts organization asks for a $2,500 grant if they're having an event that must, they must prove that people will stay overnight for this event. And most of the time, they haven't even applied for it. They can't prove it. Okay, so what? What is collected by Marion County? Uh, the average right now, $300,000 to $350,000 every three months, rounded out anywhere from $125,000 to $150,000 depending on, on the month. The benefits, at the end, benefits that Marion County provide the taxpayers of Dunellen satisfy the complaints in large about what's going on with short-term rentals. And here's, here's the problems I have heard, and I have talked to our police chief, and I have talked to our code enforcement officer, and the major complaints are the following.
Point of order.
Noise nuisance.
Point of order.
Yes.
Okay, so my feelings, Jan, that we have all come together tonight to hear how we all feel, and at the end, how the public feels about this ordinance. By you taking the first 10 or 15 minutes to sort of touch on a lot of different topics, I'm trying to take notes as you're talking, and I feel like we're missing the opportunity to talk about it together. So if you're gonna protest and not be at the meeting, I think that we need to, as a council, we need to make sure what, that we know what this is gonna look like. And if you want five more minutes, or we want to put a time limit on that, I'm okay. Okay, but a protest can't be for you 15 or 20 minutes going in a lot of different directions.
Okay, thank you. And, um, posing in fast, okay? The major complaint, the noise nuisance, and parking illegally or parking in ways that are uncomfortable to their neighbors. That's it. Okay, there, our police department, I wish Chris was here, because he could explain.
He's here.
He's here, okay. If there's a problem and one of our citizens calls us, would you respond?
Would I respond? Yeah.
Yes, okay, immediate response. It doesn't have to be a formal complaint. Say to our code officer, our code officer is not a law enforcement officer. You should not be given the responsibilities of a law enforcement officer. There's an immediate problem. That's why I take care of it, is call our law enforcement, take care of it. I have also talked to Marion County Sheriff's deputies that have been patrolling here. They said the same. They will come running. They don't care how trivial situation is. If someone calls, they're gonna come. Uh, furthermore. We have incidences at other places in town, such as the dinner bell about two weeks ago, where a, uh, someone who was staying there was waving a gun around and threatening people. SWAT, Marion County SWAT team came and took care of that problem. Was the owner of the hotel put on the burner for renting a room to that person? No, a person who is a rental, a short-term rental owner, he can't police those people. There's no requirement. State statute says that they have to do a background check. So yes, things will happen, but that's law enforcement. Okay, so basically, that's all I have to say, and I think we're gonna put ourselves in a place where the city unfortunately has gone before. We have opened the door for an opportunity to get the heck sued out of us for what?
Thank you, Jan.
And I think that's all I do.
Okay.
Good, okay. Rick, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak up again. I had actually prepared an introductory comment. I have timed it to be about 3 minutes and 12 seconds to be respectful of everyone's time. So before we start, I'd like to make a brief statement about the origin and intention of this ordinance. The effort to develop this ordinance began formally with the city in March 2022. It has been an exercise in information gathering, learning, and engaging with local residents, short-term rental operators, other small cities, state and local agencies, city council, planning council, and legal council. It was overseen by our last mayor and council, and the current version was passed on to this council to complete. Alas, we are reviewing it in its final form. The ordinance closely aligns with other cities and local governments and aims to make short-term rentals legal, safe, and conforming in our neighborhoods. In August 2022, the Department of Business and Professional Regulation website reflected 15 licensed short-term rentals in Dunellen. Today, that number has more than tripled. This shows that already our conversations are moving things in the right direction. The decision to turn a residential home into a business comes with a lot of requirements and responsibilities, many of which we will discuss in this workshop tonight. They're not requirements and responsibilities that the five of us have come up with or dreamed up. Together, we'll consider the changing landscape of our community's safety and the impact on the infrastructure of our city, roads, parks and police. We'll provide a framework for business owners to conduct business in accordance with established regulations and work through process to organize and implement the effort in a cost-neutral way to Dan Ellen's taxpayers. The good news is that most other cities, large and small, have preceded Dan Ellen in its effort, many a long, long time ago. This gives us a blueprint and frameworks to reference. Section five oh nine of Florida statutes will be referenced throughout our discussion tonight. Florida law permits a local government to regulate vacation rentals so long as the regulation of the local government does not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency of rental of vacation rentals. In twenty fourteen, the Florida legislature specifically amended Florida law in order to permit local governments to create regulation that distinguishes vacation rentals from other residential property. It's also important to note that under Florida law, vacation rentals fall within the statutory definition of a transient public lodging establishment and are primarily regulated in the public lodging section of the Florida statutes. While any house or other unit could serve as a permanent residence, while any house or other unit that could serve as a permanent residence is eligible to be used as a vacation rental, operating operating such a vacation rental transforms the use of that structure to accommodating public guests for temporary occupancy. It transforms the purpose of such structure from providing permanent housing to operating a rental business for profit. Thus utilizing a residential property as a vacation rental as statutorily defined subjects that that property and the use of the property is applicable to state and local regulations upon vacation rentals that would not otherwise apply to a residential property. So everything that we're gonna talk tonight is it on on state law, state statute. It's predicated upon things that the city has researched the right that we have to do to protect our neighborhoods and protect our city. And we're looking forward to working with the short-term rental owners on how to do it right. Thank you.
I have one comment and then I'm gonna be leaving. And that that comment is I don't think there's.
Point of order. I object, Jan.
Okay.
I object because I feel as though you have come in, you've already stated that you're gonna leave, but you haven't left. And now you're reiterating comments when other people in the council have not even yet had an opportunity to speak. So if you wanna stay for the duration of the meeting and talk about your concerns at the point that they are within the ordinance, I support that. And I hope that you will because I want you to be part of this. But I don't think it's fair for you to interrupt the entire process from the very start. We're twenty minutes in and we haven't started.
I'm gonna be leaving the meeting because I don't want my name attached to these ordinance.
Understood. Thank you.
May I make one comment before Jan leaves?
Sure.
Um, uh, Andrew, during the orientation uh for being a councilperson, I didn't think we were two things. I didn't think we were allowed to abstain, nor did I believe that I thought that we were not able to not show up in protest-type situations.
So abstaining is from a vote. Tonight is a workshop. So, you know, ultimately, if a council member is not in attendance, then they're simply not in attendance. Um, and if if actually if there was a vote to be held tonight and there isn't, uh, if someone was not present for whatever reason, you know, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be voting in that. But if someone is present in the meeting and there is a quorum, yes, they're legally required to vote unless they have a conflict. Although there is no penalty for not voting.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Yeah. I was really doing that just to make sure Jan was okay. I know there's a motion going on. I didn't want anybody getting themselves in trouble by. And well.
Do you have anything else you wanna talk about on this?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Um, well, I don't either. You just go ahead. One thing I forgot, um, a couple of people talked to me this week and said Monday night's meeting, no one could be heard speaking other than me. And that was probably because I have a very loud voice. So would everyone please try to speak into their mics? Thank you. Okay, Rex.
Okay, in going through the ordinance, you wanna start on the first page? Pretty much just where it looks like a typo at the bottom.
Okay.
And the second page.
Which version are we looking at, Rex?
Uh, the one that Mandy gave out, the one that the
Planning Council did. Okay, well, I didn't print that one, but I have the planning council. Go ahead.
So Rex, the the, I'm sorry, that I just, I think it's really vital that we're all on the same page and have the information that we need. So we're looking at the ordinance copy where the staff recommended to Planning Commission on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two? Is that with at the bottom of that one?
Uh, well, I've got twelve, twelve, twenty-two. This is the one I just they got that they sent out this morning. It's a little confused now.
This, that it was sent out this morning?
Yes, regarding.
Mandy, do you have a hard copy of that one? Because I have a slightly different version as well. So I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the exact same one, cross-reference with mine.
What we discovered today is that there was the one that I sent out yesterday was the one that was approved by the Planning Commission by resolution. But what I've learned today is that resolution had um conditions. And so the one that you got yesterday did not include the conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission by the resolution adoption. But then there was a subsequent version. And I'm gonna go print that one because there were, because whatever those conditions were, were added by Patrick, but not until like the twenty-ninth is when we got that one. So let me go print that one.
Can I just ask if that was attached to the, like if someone went to the website and wanted to see what we were looking at is that?
The resolution? What's on the website right now is the final, final clean version after the
Planning.
Planning proved it that does contain the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Mandy, could you print in color so that the red shows out the changes?
I think she heard you. Did it color?
I don't know. Get your call. Thanks, man. Thanks, Jill.
Counsel, if you don't mind, in the meantime, um, there's something I would like to address, um, if that's okay with you or we're waiting for the the versions. Um, just to touch on on something here. Uh, everybody is familiar with the impetus of the ordinance. And of course, when it started, the original very short ordinance and the longer version that essentially was an à la carte ordinance for for planning to go through and and take out what they don't like and to um keep in what they wanna keep in and to make changes. Um, the city is in a good position right now. And just addressing some of some of Jan's points, I think. You know, since this first version of the ordinance came out, which is on on the agenda, uh, we've had an extensive made obsession that went through and really showed a lot of cards where the legislative legislature is looking. And while ultimately the bills didn't pass, we did see what the two houses agreed on. So we now have the benefit of knowing where the state legislature probably will go or would go if they could have agreed on certain things. We know what they agreed on. That puts us in a much better position than uh, I think, well, shouldn't say us, but that puts just cities in general in a good position to know this looks like where the legislature is going. Um, in addition to that, uh, the city's had the benefit of hearing from the short-term rental operation owners and what really causes them heartburn. Uh, and in addition to that, cities heard from the proponents of the regulation and what causes them heartburn. And we have the benefit of all the planning commission work. In addition to that, one thing I'd point out, the city is also in a position where the city is currently contemplating a major comp plan rewrite. We've seen the legislature really take the stance that, hey, cities can do a lot of these things. We want short-term rentals to be treated just like other businesses or similar. Things like parking and so forth, that presents a great opportunity for the city to visit that in the comprehensive pantry, right? And write comprehensive regulations that not only apply to short-term rentals, but apply across the board. So a lot of these things, I think, that have been causing heartburn are topics. Um, they might end up in part of this ordinance or they might not, but they can certainly be readdressed later and addressed comprehensively in a way that probably causes somewhat less heartburn because it's city regulation across the board. And we can take that apart, you know, as we go through it if there's questions for me. But I think ultimately, uh, and I don't know because I don't know the conversation Jan had, but I would be optimistic, at least hopefully, that a lot of the heartburn that's there on both sides, you know, can really be addressed because there's been some really good points made. And then, of course, like I said, we've seen what the legislature probably would have done, which changes the gambit of how the city might move forward. So that's all I wanna say. I hope that wasn't too much, but I just wanna point out this unique scenario that the city is currently in that it really hasn't been in, you know, until just this past month with the end of the session.
All right.
Andrew, as we go through this, um, would you speak up if you see us going a direction that does not align with where you think the legislators are?
I can do that. And um, I I normally I try to keep myself out and don't wanna interject myself into the conversation. So I'm happy to do that. If my interjections or whatever causes, you know, train of thought or whatever, please let me know to back off.
Right, right.
But I will, I will, I will jump in since that's a request. And then, you know, if it's not appropriate, just let me know and
Absolutely.
guys can take the conversation where you wanna go. I will operate however you want me to operate this evening.
Okay. Um, I wanna, I agree with Andrew. I think this last legislative session, um, where the Senate did approve a lot of information, actually approved a bill, but when it went to the House, it didn't survive. Um, but it does give us a lot of information about where the direction, I think, of the state of Florida is. Um, the other thing, being that my background was tax and I dealt with case law all the time. For somebody to quote a Wall Street Journal office article that quotes what's going on in New York, that is totally irrelevant to what goes on here in Dunellen. I'm sorry to say. Uh, they're in a different district and thank goodness, New York is where New York is and Dunellen's where Dunellen is. But what I'm trying to say is just because you read something in a Wall Street Journal article or any article, if it's not related to the state of Florida, it's really irrelevant. Uh, I do agree with Andrew. There were some things that came out in that legislative session that kinda woke me up to the fact that I think as we proceed through this, we need to be very careful of whatever we propose to the short-term rental people. Um, we cannot be more restrictive of them than we are on residents. And I'm gonna cite an example right now. Uh, I personally do not like nine hundred cars parked in a yard. Okay? But where I happen to live, there are two houses on my street with very, very large families. And over Memorial Inn, I think there was eighteen cars in one yard and probably twenty-five in another. These are homes and we can't do anything about it. So because I have a neighbor that has a short-term rental and she has ten cars in her yard, I really don't think I'm gonna be able to do anything about that unless I wanna restrict our own neighborhoods, even though that does bother me. Okay? But what I'm trying to say is that to me is something we gotta be careful of. If if we go out here and say, okay, you can't have so many cars in the yard and so many parking places. But then residents are allowed to do that or do do that. Um, I think that's opening ourselves up for a problem. Um, that said, personally, I think the biggest problem I have with all of this and with short-term rentals is not the short-term rental business. Uh, I had two big problems. One, most of them were not registered with the state of Florida. Of course, we've learned tonight that it looks like we started with fifteen out of fifty and now we're up to about forty out of fifty. So at least the threat of doing this, these people have started getting registered, which I think is wonderful. Um, that doesn't preclude us from having some form of registration here in Dunellen. The biggest problem I have with short-term rentals is not parking. It's not a lot of the stuff that's in. The biggest problem I have with it is noise. Uh, over the Memorial Day weekend, the short-term rental down from my house uh, got very, very loud on Friday, Friday and Saturday night. I did not call the police. I called the owner of the building and sent her a text and said, I have a problem with the noise down here. And the next day I sent her a text because those people moved out and another group moved in and Sunday night, they were extremely loud. But again, I did not notify the police. I just called the owner of the property. I would recite what she gave me back in a text, which was pretty much, I don't really care. That's your problem. That's the reason I think we need an ordinance. Okay, I'm gonna just be honest. If she just said, I'll take care of it, I'll notify them, whatever, that's one thing. That's not what she did. Okay, this is the reason I think we need an ordinance. And as far as all the rest of this, as long as we cover noise and don't do anything that's more restrictive of these residents that own short-term rentals than we do ourselves, I don't really care what happens. Uh, because I do think we cover a lot of stuff and some of it I look at from the viewpoint, is this more restrictive of what's going on with our own residents? And if it is, I think we either address the residents before we address the short-term rentals or we're gonna have a problem.
And and I agree that that can be a conversation as we go through. I wanted to speak real quick to Jan's um quoting of the legal expenses because indeed she's very accurate. Um, I just wanna clarify that I I know that we have some real um budget bulldogs here on the council and those uh expenses were incurred prior to this council. So that was previous mayor, previous council, spending a year creating this in their own way. Um, I hope that you'll see uh that we're organized to move through this. Um, I don't think that we intend to spend many, many meetings on this. So the legal expenses are reflective of a different council and a different culture.
I would like to point out Jan was on that council.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Just wanna throw out to you, uh, you're talking about noise. Dan Ellen already has the noise ordinance.
I know they do.
All right, um, and it's in there. Um, what I am finding as far as punishment by that um, is what you have in there is it will be related to state law. And the way it's written in here is it looks like if we come out there and we find a violation, there's a violation as of right now. Maybe y'all can help me, but it's a five-hundred-dollar fine. All right, so we can come out and you have a noisy rental this weekend. We can issue that whoever's there a five-hundred-dollar fine. All right, um, if they have, there's an alcohol issue out in the street or whatever, those are gonna be fifty-dollar fines, all right? But if it's a noise ordinance violation right now, it's looking like it's a five-hundred-dollar fine. So those people move out, new people move in, we come out to another five-hundred-dollar fine. Uh, shortly after that, that that rental would become a nuisance and you can go after the nuisance abatement and now you can board that house up for a year and they can't rent. So that's.
I appreciate that. No, I
That's just.
I'm aware of this, this noise ordinance because Chief McQuaid and I had gone over it a couple of times over the years because of this. Um, again, and this is probably my own fault. I try not to involve the police when there's an issue like this. I'd rather go to the owner of the property and try to and um, what I'm telling you is what I got over the weekend was very unacceptable.
Can I ask you a question? When you go out, when you say there's a five-hundred-dollar fine, is that given to the people who are renting?
Whoever's renting it, yep. Whoever's, whoever's standing there.
So that they're with, they are given a written certificate that says that there is a fine. And now is that the first time or is that the second time you go out? Do you go out and warn them first?
So it's gonna be different. Because under the ordinance, it falls under hours. So if it's ten P M, ten P M to seven A M, if we're driving by and we can hear that music or loud, whatever it is, all right, over fifty feet, we can stop, park, walk up and go, here's five-hundred dollars. All right, if it's between seven A M and ten P M, you're gonna have to be a victim. So somebody's gonna have to call us and say, hey, that bothers me. We knock on the door. Hey, can you turn it down? They go, no. We come back over to you, say, hey, they don't wanna turn it down. And you go, name me as a victim. Now we can go back over, go, hey, please turn it down or it's five-hundred dollars. And they go, no, won't do that. Okay. Here's a five-hundred-dollar fine.
I, yeah, and and this is gonna be covered in section eighteen, two forty-two C as we go over the ordinance. So I just, you know, because I'll have comments about noise too. And I think if we address things throughout, it would be great. Thank you for being here. It's great to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Okay.
We ready to start now? We ready to start now? Thirty minutes in.
Okay, Rex. Okay.
Get going.
Let's go. Looks like there's no lines or anything down to until we get to the fourth page, which would be line two ten.
Okay, so I'm, Rex, I'm not gonna be a thorn in your side, but it's, I think we're just trying to get off and running.
Okay.
I, I would prefer if we could go through um. Each section, starting with the whereas section.
No problem.
And just do it section by section. So first would be whereas, then we would have definitions. Vacation rental general regs, that will give everyone an opportunity to make a comment on every section.
Right.
And the other concern that I have um, is uh, referring to lines. When we refer to lines in the ordinance. I know we're trying to all be on the same page with what Mandy gave us, but um. If we could go by sections, it would be.
Okay.
Because I'm, I prepared differently.
Whereas section.
Whereas, excellent.
Okay, does anybody have any comments on any of the whereas section?
I do. Does anybody else? Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of comments, um. And I'm gonna say, because I don't like the way this is written, but then I go back to where I started a minute ago about residents. Because where it's, it starts on. Let's make sure it's the same word. Uh, yeah, ninety-two, line ninety-two. Whereas the maximum number of occupancy. With the exception of children under the age of six. Based on the number of bedrooms, blah, blah, blah. And basically it says you can't have a maximum, you can have only a maximum of sixteen people in a vacation rental. But children under six don't count. Uh, that ex bothers me extensively. Which this tells me I could have sixteen adults and thirty children in one house and I don't think that's safe.
I can, I, I would like to speak to that, Wally, in just a second. Sometimes it's gonna take me a minute to get organized. But there's um, there's a section that we're gonna go through here where we get to eighteen, two forty-two a little later on. Or I think that we're gonna have an opportunity to address that. So I agree that we should mark that as an area of concern and revisit it a little bit later on if, if everyone's in agreement.
Yeah, no, I, I know it comes up again. I'm aware of that. Okay, I just. Since we're in the whereas, I thought I'd just say what I, whereas.
Now, I have a question for Andrew. Since they're stipulating a limit for the maximum number of people. Do we have the same kind of limits to a residence and with the fact that there's no limit to a residence? Make this part of it non-doable.
So a couple of things to keep in mind here. Florida's building code and Florida's fire code, when it comes to occupancy, do not apply to single-family and duplex homes. So you don't have those, um, you know, limitations there. The other thing that you have that comes into play is the Fair Housing Act. Um, which uh, addresses occupancy and, and prevents those kind of limitations. The Fair Housing Act typically apply to transient rental properties. It can under certain circumstances. I think one of the big options that the city has here and, and to move in the same direction, but to alter its approach. Um, one of the things, and I was, I was gonna jump in, but I was gonna wait until we, we got to that part of the section, but since it's been brought up and the question's asked, I'll tell you. Uh, with the legislation that came out, proposed legislation that ultimately did not pass. Um, the one part of the, the Senate bill stated, um, and it's just quoting this particular paragraph that talks about preemption. This paragraph, or other words, this preemption does not prohibit a local law ordinance or regulation. This paragraph does not prohibit a. Not a problem. It doesn't bother me at all. Um, this paragraph does not prohibit a local law ordinance or regulation from restricting the maximum. For residential properties that are rented if uniformly applied without regard to whether the residential. Property is used as a vacation rental. So in other words, the legislature was moving in the way, hey, if you're gonna take action to restrict occupancy. We want to do it somewhere across the board. Now, that's interesting because of course we have the Fair Housing Act. And that does apply to longer-term rentals. One of the things that I would tell you here, if the city's gonna go through and. We adopt something where we're focusing or the city's focusing on registration and some of these things. Um, this is one of those prime areas that can really be addressed in the comp plan. And evaluating regulations that may apply across the board or seeing how things go first with registration and then revisiting this.
Right.
And, and that would allow for it, you know, a, a more comprehensive, you know, way of, of regulating and still addressing this topic.
Sure.
This is something that the city can certainly do, but there's another avenue to do it that I think, you know, at least some people would find more. Palpable. So it's an option for you.
I, I agree with that. If we can, again, because what I keep seeing with law and the cases that I've read. Again, if we can get it out of here, like you're suggesting, and not have it as part of this. But through our comp plan, address it for citywide. Protects us from putting it in here and having somebody challenge it in here. I, I agree with that, Andrew. I, I totally do. The thing that just bothers me when I see that it's an unlimited number of six-year-olds that can be in a building. You know, and to me, that's not, okay, we're gonna have a birthday party with twenty kids. I don't have a problem with that, but if. They're spending the night with twenty adults, then I have a problem because that's too many people in the house. But I agree, maybe we need to. Think about that and address that in a comp plan. Uh, that might be the safer answer, answering. Okay. Right, sorry to get off on that. Or that's the only thing I had on whereas is.
So, Wally, what's the consensus with that? Are we removing that? Are, are, are we proposing to remove that?
In my mind, we probably should. But we're gonna, we're gonna address it somewhere else in a minute, so we'll get into a lot more detail when it comes up again. Um, so right now, let's just put a question mark on what we're gonna do with that.
Thank you.
If the city moves in the direction that it doesn't want to regulate occupancy immediately through this ordinance.
Right.
With adoption, you know, now it becomes a problem, you can always come back later and do it. So if you take that approach.
Right.
Um, to either wait and see or to do it the comp plan route, there are a number of provisions and definitions and throughout the ordinance that would just be cut and, and removed. And they can be recycled and reused later or, you know, shuffled aside, just depending on what you all decide to do in the future. But it would, it would just change the way the ordinance would look right away.
Right.
Definitions for bedrooms, et cetera, would just come out.
Right, and, and I think, I think that's where we're gonna end up because we don't regulate residents. Residents is now that aren't short-term rentals on number of people there. And number of cars and number of kids. And to me, these three things, although they bother me. Um, I think would open us up for problems because we don't regulate them unless we do it in our comp plan or some other way.
Right, and I prefer that without making blanket, I think we'll do this, that we continue to just proceed through so that we can all talk about it together.
Got it.
Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Okay, that's all I had on whereas. What about you, Tim?
I think, uh, you guys hit the same one I did.
Okay.
I'm good.
We're good, good. Okay.
Okay, moving down to the next section, that would be articles, article eight, vacation rentals, starting with eighteen, two forty. Anybody have any comments on that? Now, the next section, the.
Oh, can you please, um. If you could just please go a little slower, I need to be able to find the second. So you're looking at eighteen, two forty?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm good there. Thank you.
Okay, then the next one would be eighteen, two forty-one, the definition's the bedroom. And the original thing was the bedroom seventy square feet and then it was added that you could put an armoire. Or something else and call it a bedroom.
Anybody have a comment about that? Cause I do.
I do too.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so. I think. I know that the planning commission struggled with this section a lot, um. Perhaps uh, suggesting that the city uses the, the same Florida building code definition, uh. So this would be tied into like the property appraiser, right? So if you go to the property appraiser website, they tell you how many bedrooms are in your house. And it's. That would make it uniform across the board and it would take out some of this. Um, subj- subjectivity about wardrobes and chiffres. I mean, we certainly don't want people. Buying those, placing them in closets and calling it a bedroom. So I, I think that the best option would be to, um. Tie it to the property appraiser's website. And if people make changes or they wanna um, add bedrooms, that they can do that through the county. And then they can come back to the city and give us the documentation that it's been done properly and then we can take a look at it.
And I had the same issue with that one and I agree with what Julian just said.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think we should stick to the definition of what the. Property appraiser uses is what a bedroom is. And although I hate to admit it, I was actually in the real estate business for two years and I know when buying, selling houses, you have. Closet for a bedroom or it's not considered a bedroom. And um, I think that's, I agree with that.
Fire safety codes and safety overall, I think that this is a key area that we need to, um. Take a look at.
Okay. Right.
Then going on to the next page, page five of fourteen, starting at the top, the owner. Does anybody have any, anything about the definitions, owner, owner occupied? Responsible party?
I'm good with all of them.
Okay. Julian, are you, okay, I'll.
I'm not okay yet. Give me a minute.
You're fine, you're fine.
Okay, yeah, um. Where are you at, Rex?
We're on, it would be line one sixty-seven. We just turned the last page, the last page. Last page was about the bedroom and then the next, the next line down where they have two definitions, owner. Owner occupied and responsible party. Okay.
That's the point at which I was gonna um, say that there, uh, I had received some feedback about suggestions about, um. About in addition, something that's not here that could be beneficial to add. Is this a good time to talk about that?
I think that would fall underneath the very next line item. Uh, so I think your timing is right, uh, word. Uh, definition for vacation rental.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that was exactly my thought. So when we're there, I'll speak to that.
Ready to talk about that?
I'm sure.
Let's go.
Sure, so there's a lot of, um. You know, there's a lot of ways this can get stretched out sometimes and why are we calling a vacation rental? So some suggestions, um, I'm seeing in my community, some houseboats. Um, that, you know, can be on and off of the water. So these kinds of things uh, become concerns also. In our community, we've seen RVs being parked, um, and people living in RVs on other properties. So I guess just add something about maybe like recreation vehicles. Um. Houseboats campers. Uh, should not be able to extend the rental capacity in an uncontrolled manner. Um, because of course then we'd be turning our neighborhoods into RV parks and that's not what we want. So I think that it, it needs to be added. I've seen it in other city ordinances. Uh, you know, in reviewing them of other small cities, I've seen this in so. Um, something to the effect of recreation vehicles, campers, houseboats, tents or similar things should not be utilized as part of a vacation rental. It's a quality addition.
I fully agree with that. I would hate to see the Rainbow River become a string of houseboats and it's already very small. And the other concern with that is since we're looked at the definition for the appraiser for the bedrooms. Is somebody may then say, well, you know, I want two extra bedrooms to raise the rent, so I'm gonna put two motorhomes out here on the property. So, yeah, I think that that would be a valid.
Not, I totally agree with the motorhomes. I actually agree with the uh, houseboats, but do we have jurisdiction over that river?
Andrew, right, what his opinion is.
So it's been about a year, but I believe I looked at this before, at least cursorily, just to answer some questions. And I will come back and I can provide you a full answer. I'll go and digest it fully. I do believe the RVs and campers are addressed by state law. They don't qualify, you know, under the definition of public transient, um, you know, lodging. But I'll check all that out. Make sure houseboats have their own sort of rules and, and regulations, it's my understanding and, um. You know, those may be excluded too. I would just have to double-check that, but um. That would not take me long to fully investigate and bring you back answers at the next meeting. So I'm happy to research that for you.
Um, just as a comment, when uh, I went down to Key Largo, okay, um, there's a. Ton of uh, RVs that are uh, uh, vacation rentals. Um, and, and I'm not saying that it's legal or illegal, um.
Somebody's doing it.
Right, right, and by the masses, I mean, it was. At least just to let you know.
It's something that also could be allowed under a different zoning designation.
Now, what I will say is they were all in RV parks, so maybe that's what the difference was. Okay.
So they probably are.
Yes.
Uh, I have a very specific comment about this. Um, the short-term rental right down from me over the Christmas holidays, pulled up a seventy-foot bus. Parked it, they could not get it in the yard, so they parked it out in the street and ran it for two days. With people staying in it, in addition to who was in the house, and to me, that is wrong, uh, in a neighborhood. Uh, the question I do am concerned about. Early on, when I moved here, I had a long discussion with the code enforcement individual that was here. And asked him about living in an RV in a residential area and he said it was against our code. So I would like to verify that by somebody to make sure, because I would hope it is. Uh, having said that, I am aware of a number of RVs in this town where people live in them. And therefore it's not being enforced. Um, so I would like to look at the comprehensive plan. To make sure, what do we say about RVs or trailers or fifth wheels or whatever? And is it allowed to have one in the yard and live in it? Um, I have one, but I don't live in it. Um. So, and to me, if that is the case and it's in our plan already. I think applying it to short-term rentals would be appropriate. In addition to this Christmas holiday event, um, during the summer last summer. That same particular short-term rental had a individual bring in a trailer. Run a generator for four days and connect it to the generator, the RV. And lived in it in addition to living in the house and I do not appreciate that. So I think we need to address it. And I guess that goes under the definition of what a vacation rental is. Is that where we are?
Well, that would be their personal vehicle. It wouldn't be the.
No, I'm, I'm talking about a trailer. We got two instances. One was a bus. Um. Amaze me. They, they drove down from Gainesville in a bus and a truck and a car. Parked the car and the truck in the yard. The bus wouldn't go through the gate, so they parked it on the street and lived in it for two days. And then, um. They realized that may be a problem, so they drove back to Gainesville, picked up a trailer. Brought it back and parked it in the yard and stayed in it. Because they had a dog didn't work in the house.
I guess what I, I guess what I'm thinking is it's not, I mean, I would. It's not part of what that person is renting as a vacation rental. Somebody brought it there, so it wouldn't fall under. I, I don't, I think that had to be addressed differently somewhere else because it's not, not like. That person who's renting out that house as a vacation rental is also providing a. An RV or a camper, you know.
It might fall, it might fall under park, like, I know parking's sticky, but it might fall under parking or something like that.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
That, that's the way I would interpret it.
Well, I think we need to regulate. I don't, we don't, what I'm getting back to is I believe. Lonnie was the one that told me that you could not have an RV in a residential area in Dunellen and have somebody living in it. Because I asked him about it. Cause I have a trailer.
True, you can't.
I have a, a fifth wheel trailer and I have a bus, and we don't live in either one of them. I know people in Dunellen who do. And so it's not being enforced, but that's, that's a whole nother matter, but I wanna understand what we do. Again, in the city of Dunellen, for people who live in these RVs that are not in a park but in a yard. And then I want that same rule applied here, because these rental people are bringing these, I agree, it's not the rental owner. Bringing them, it's the people staying there are bringing them and they're. And I don't think that's appropriate.
And don't you think that goes back to a little bit about um, it's a city, it's a city code, I know, cause I've had a problem with it. And the city would address that, just like they would address any resident who has someone.
Exactly, that's what I'm, I'm getting back, the same thing, right, which would be outside of this is what I'm saying. Totally, but I wanna make sure what we do, and I think we need to correct it, I don't think it necessarily needs to be corrected here, just we apply the same rules.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so we're gonna go down, uh vacation rental eighteen two forty two. The regular registration and inspection, which registration meaning the. Vacation rental registers that rental with the city. That they show all be required, do we have any problem with that?
Yeah. This is a little bit of a sticky section, if somebody else wants to have feedback first, I.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm, okay.
Small voice, so you just jump right in there.
I have some comments, but go ahead.
I'm just, I'm a little delayed to them. Trying to find my words.
Yeah, no, that's all good, yeah, let's do it right, not fast.
Right, not fast, thank you, so on the, on the one that we're looking at, B says registration and inspection. So, that word registration is a little bit problematic, I think. And there is uh. Okay, conceptually. Registration would uh imply a single act. And that the process is then complete. But if we used a different term, like. Permitting. Then um. Right, so registration is a single act, I register it with the city, and now I have a short term rental, and that's the end of the story. Whereas if we change it to something like permitting, then we have annual um. Annual renewals and updates and check-ins, and it's a reciprocal relationship that's ongoing, it's not like I'm registered and I'm here forever.
Right.
So I would propose changing it from registration to uh permitting, and I would call the section permitting and inspections. For example, section one might read, permit required. Should be unlawful for any person or entity to operate a vacation rental within the corporate limits of the city without first. Permitting the vacation rental, required to be permitted by said date. Number two. And again, we just go through and clean up that language. Every vacation rental owner shall apply with the city. Community Development Department, a properly completed application. If anyone's following me?
Yeah, yeah, we did our homework on.
As prescribed by the city, together with a permit fee. Separate permit application for each vacation rental. Permit application accompanied by, and then there's some revisions that need to happen. In the next sections, starting with um, you know. A through J.
Correct.
So that, that got us to A. A copy of the.
Business tax.
Right, and I would add current and active business tax receipt. Shall I continue?
No, I, I agree with all that, I, I think you're right, I think the word registration is a good word. But it, it does sound like once you register, you're done, whereas when you get a permit and you get an annual permit or renew a permit. There's, there's more to it, so I, I agree with that.
Yeah, and I do, you know, I, I have a further explanation about the um. About the language of, of uh you know, permit versus application versus. So if you're interested in any additional information on that, I definitely. Have some, but I think if we're in agreement, I'll just move on.
It's okay, I, I just wanna bring something to your attention, I, I understand that um. The state has, under the current law, preempted licensure. Um one thing I'd say is that permitting is sort of tangent to licensure, they're definitionally mean the same thing. Registration is the term that the um. The state uses and is used in perspective regulation, and that's the one that they're choosing to go forward and when, in, in. Addressing what local governments can do, that being said, um you know, if we wanna pick some other word. I can, I can try to find one, but if we stay with registration, that seems to be the standard, and to alleviate uh the concern um. Councilman Mendocas concern, certainly we can make it clear, like, listen, registration doesn't mean this, I can add it into definitions and clarify, hey, this isn't one and done. Um and add language, so we, we're keeping the, the standard terminology, that's what you're gonna see in most of the ordinances, this is just an option, but add that. You know, and an explicit statement, hey, it's not a one time deal. And I can certainly clean that up and add that, if we keep kind of the, the language, if you wanna keep the language, if you wanna go in a different direction, I can go that way too. But registration is the standard terminology that is being used, and that's what the state uses.
I think if that's what you're seeing. Other people use the word registration, then I, I'd say then we just need to be very clear in the definition of what registration means.
I can add that and make that crystal clear for you.
Because again, I think the more we mimic. What other people are doing that are successful with this, I think the better for all of us.
I agree, and then Andrew, I'll just um later on, I'll forward on to you some of the, you know, just the thinking behind it, so that.
Absolutely.
We're on the same page.
Okay, so we, through A or B or where are we?
B.
Or B, okay.
Again, just um. Again, uh current and active license, so a copy, B would be a copy of the vacation rentals for an active license with the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation.
I agree.
You're adding.
The word current and active. A copy of the current and active Florida Department of Business Professional Regulation license. The question I had with it was, okay, if they get a license, but then they never get another one.
And that's what's happening now, when we look, when I go to the DP, to the um website today. We see a great number of these um are, are delinquent.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah. I think that the renewal might have been like this month or something, and there's. Significant number of people who have not renewed properly.
Of current, and what's the other addition?
Uh just uh, I would propose that B would say a copy of the vacation rentals current and active license with the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation. As a transient uh public lodging establishment. Are you?
No, I've got it, I'm just, I'm looking at two different copies here, but I've got one that has all my notes on it, and I'm making the changes on another one, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Basically, you're just bringing B into more line with what C says, a vacation rental's current and active certificate.
Exactly.
That's right.
Very much saying the same thing, cause it said it in B, but it didn't say it in A.
You can just add current and active to all of them, if counsel's good with that.
Some of it's just kind of minor cleanup.
Right.
We'll look at D next. Proof of account. The tax collector. I was just trying to make it a little clearer, right now, proof of the account, yeah, that's. Yeah, either way.
Yep.
D looks good, the uh E. Any condition added pamphlets. So is this um, here we're looking for really proof of um inspection. Verifying compliance with fire safety codes for the vacation rental.
Well, E is actually, the, the postings are pamphlets, that would be the safety information that the ordinance requires the um. The owner of the property to provide to tenants.
Oh, on site.
So, so that, and. That is, I'll tell you one, since that, that question was asked, one thing I'll point out right now, if we look at the bill that did not. Pass, but the Senate bill and what the houses, the House and the Senate agreed on. All of the um, everything in this section. As far as registration and these requirements, they are all contemplated by the proposed legislation, so the state said, oh, this is okay. Save for your next three, but they did say that safety information was fine, so that applies to E. But F, G, and H, the layout and sketches, as well as a copy of a sample lease agreement. Would, if this legislation had passed, uh would not be allowed to be part of the registration process. And I can address some of those or provide more information, but I know we're not there yet, so I.
Okay. So you're saying that these sketches, inter actor and, and the lease, they're not required?
Those would not, well, it would not be allowed to be part of this ordinance. If, but it is currently, because the state did not pass their regulation. That being said, you may not need these, if you, if the city is going to commit to inspections, fire inspections and so forth. You're gonna be having somebody go in there anyhow, you probably don't need them, so it's something that we could take out, we can leave them in if you want, but I just wanted to point out. That everything else is explicitly, has been called out by the state. Prospectively okay, we know they're moving in the direction of saying, hey, you can do this, and is, whether they interfere or not, currently you can, if that makes sense.
Right, and is it uh reasonable to say that if they come out and change their mind, that then we can just adjust our ordinance to then be? Okay, so by, by doing it, we're kind of um. I don't know, acting. Acting more uh. Extending as much as we can do, and then pulling back later, as opposed to coming up short, and then not having what we need on the other end.
Or you suggest leaving it in?
Well, I suggest that we talk about it.
Okay.
If it's an easy fix, if it passes, I mean, there was a super majority this year. When it didn't pass, wasn't it?
Well, it, you had, well, essentially what you had was you had a, a Senate that passed one version of the bill, and you had the House that had the other version of the bill. And they, they couldn't agree, and uh. Senate asked the House to reconsider, and they said, no, we won't do it. And so that's ultimately what happened, but yeah, they, you know, both the House, both of the uh. Both sides of the legislature were committed, and, and there was a lot of things that they agreed on. You know, it's just there were a few things that they didn't agree on, which were big ticket items.
Should we take a look at F, G, and H?
Do what now?
Do you wanna take a look at F, G, and H, or? What, what's your feeling on that, in light of our conversation?
I would say that one of the requirements is, it's a hand drawn sketch. So seeing as though it's not like they've gotta hire an architect or somebody to draw it or a draftsman. They can basically lay it out on, on, on a computer. That it's really not gonna hurt anything, and if it's removed, then we just strike it out.
I think there's a few choices here for counsel to make that, that go a little bit beyond the section. I have not heard controversy about the sketches. Like I said, if there's gonna be an inspection, and ultimately that's a decision you make, if, if you're definitely going to require the inspections. Then the sketches may be extraneous, of course, they may help the inspector. So that's just a decision to make, but that is tied to the inspections, a copy of a sample lease agreement. Um you know, I think one of the big things that. There has been feedback on is most of these, is I understand are gonna be operating through Airbnb and VRBO. And having a copy of a sample lease agreement and so forth, when they're operating through these platforms, and if you're reasonably assured that. Everything's gonna be fine through the platforms. I don't know, and, and this is of course the decision for you all to make, if you even want a copy of a sample.
Right.
Lease agreement, because that is gonna cause a little bit of friction in how these things work, because each one of these operators works a little bit differently.
Right.
So that's just the decision, maybe it's something to come back to or address now, because it, it kind of stokes another conversation that is. Some of these things that we're seeing are showing up later in the ordinance. So I don't know whether you, if you wanna address them now or address them later.
The only thing.
That can always come out.
The only thing I could see with the lease agreement is that there is instances. When houses where people just have a lease, a guy rents the house to somebody, say like through Craigslist. And then he says, I've got a lease. And if something like this showed up and the owner had a lease, the lease agreement he's using. As his lease agreement, and a discrepancy showed up, or say somebody moved in and said, hey, I've got a lease here. We would then have a way to verify that that was their official lease. You follow what I'm saying?
Follow it, but um. What I'm. Not following is, what's the necess, I mean, I know you're kind of explaining it, but I, I just. Uh I, I don't see what this really does for anything, other than just adds burden to the uh.
Okay.
Well, my reaction to it is, if there's something wrong with the lease. The lease or and leasee have the problem, not the city of Dunellen.
Right.
That's where I got with this, because, I mean, if we don't attach it, and there, there's not a lease, or there's a different lease. It really doesn't affect Dunellen.
Right.
They've registered with us, so I don't know why we need to leave.
Right, right, to me, it just adds a burden on the uh short term rental folks.
And like you're saying, if they use different services, then, okay, you gotta kind of figure it out.
Unless there's something that somebody knows that I don't.
Okay, you wanna take it out? Yeah, I'd rather take F out, I don't see the need, cause again, when you're leasing. My knowledge of leases is, the lease is there to protect the one leasing the property and the one leasing the property. Um whereas, what does that do to the city of Dunellen? Nothing. I don't see where it does anything to us, I mean, they, they've registered supposedly as someone leasing property. I don't care if we say the lease, I mean, what does it do to us? Am I missing something, Andrew?
No, I think that was probably tied more into record keeping, but there are state laws that are applicable on record keeping.
Right.
And you, you know, it's an option that we do see in ordinances, but probably something very specific to one particular jurisdiction, but I included it. Because I wanted you to have a full range of options.
No, I, I get why it's in there, but I'm just wondering, we're trying to clean this up, make it simple, that just makes it simple.
So then um, maybe you just come out, big view again, number two. Um I'm backtracking just a, a little bit to summarize. This, which the things is, uh what we're expecting is gonna be included with the. Application or registration or whatever we decide to call it. So uh the tax receipts, the active license. Department of Revenue paperwork, tax collector. So upon the application, we're also gonna have the uh completed inspection verifying compliance with the building codes and the. Safety inspection, right?
Well, in this case, I think that would come, there's a section that, that goes to that, because first they would be providing the registration, this is just a, you know, what they're submitting. And from that point, they would have to, to go to their um inspections, and then they would receive their certificate after they pass. Um so this is just the submissions.
They go back out, they get their fire, their building, bring it back in, thank you.
Would, would it be um, would it, would it be better if it said. Instead of where it would, where it says, registration form, registration form, does it say application for registration?
And I think that goes back to the conversation that, that Andrew had about um.
The, the, the term registration is. Is the standard terminology, but I'm just saying, you have to apply for registration, just like somebody come in to apply for a permit. Something of that nature, it just seems to the, to go. It just seems like the, the word application ought to be in there somewhere, application for registration.
Mm-hmm, it's easy, I, I can, I understand what you're saying and can apply for. It's easy. I I can, I understand what you're saying and can apply for registration. And that might be something that we go back to B two. And, you know, I can add some language in there and we'll get there. That it's all complete, you know, once everything's been done and so forth and passed inspection, because the state talks about revoking registration. And and that sort of thing. This is all part of the process. So I understand exactly where you're all going with it and I can fix it. The way that you're indicating you would like it to be.
Now that we're on this, it brings, I wrote a note here and I forgot when we're going through to be. Do you have sample forms, what these registrations? Will they look like that cities have done?
I don't have any handy, but I, you know, you can find them there out there for each one of these. And so the city wouldn't be starting from scratch if that's the, if that's what you're asking.
That that's what I'm asking is how hard it's going to be to develop a registration form for all this for us.
Yeah, I think that's one of the advantages of all the cities going before us.
Well, exactly. We we can go out there and see what they're doing.
Even the safety checklists and there's, you know, lots of examples out there for us.
Right, okay.
I think ultimately what this would look like is just that, exactly that, a checklist and something that they would sign off on and, you know, hey, this has all been verified. That they attach and, you know, paperclip all of these documents that are requested attached to it, just a simple one pager.
Okay. Now I'm a little confused. Is that something that we want to task Andrew with or is that something that we can? I just want to make sure we got a way to find some forms. I don't really care who finds them.
I I don't, I mean, we, I think that we can find forms on our own and then consult with you at the end of the day, right? Yeah, okay.
All right.
Yeah, all of the work of finding some sample forms.
I will hit it too.
Oh.
Right.
Rex will do it. I'll sign on. Thank you, Rex.
Okay. All right.
Oh, I guess that brings us to J? Through J yet?
J.
A completed vacation rentals party designation.
Oh.
Is that H I? Oh, there is no J. Okay.
I don't know if they're in the J.
HI is the last one. I kept looking for J. I don't see a J.
So we're at I. On the planning commission version.
Oh, the responsible party designation? Okay.
Do you have any questions with that? I'm almost good with that.
I'm good on that one. I just want to step back to H. Because I know that there were some changes made. I think there were some changes made. Interior building sketch by floor. Bedrooms exits, hallways, stairways, fire extinguishers.
That was okay.
Okay, so this, is there a consensus that exit lighting is not of concern?
The exit light would be on the other one.
It was taken out by the plan zone.
Right. It's my goal to just revisit some of those things and make sure that we're in agreement with those changes.
I think the exit lighting was applying to the some reason to the, yeah, because the exit lighting would be to the interior, the exit lighting was referenced on the interior building sketch.
Ah.
Unless the one we'd like to see back in.
I thought that exit lighting was tied to a specific.
I think it's farther back in there.
It would be in the life safety section.
If the exit lighting in Maryland.
No, it's removed in the, it's been removed from the planning version.
Okay, are we in agreement with removing the exit lighting section? And how did that go in accordance with? The law would be my question.
Correct.
Okay, question for me. Well, so that goes to the minimum life safety requirements. Here's how I think that the inspections will work, and I think ultimately the way this ordinance was, we're kind of jumping into expect inspections, which is a different section. And that's just kind of, I think, the way this review is going to go, because
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right.
But if if we're going to talk about that route. This was originally written that that didn't have mandatory inspections. Now, really what the state does is it says, hey, you know, inspections are really preempted. That's under the purview of state for licensing and we don't want to view if there's a complaint. But the city does have the ability to look at building code and fire code inspections. And from what I've heard overwhelmingly is the city wants to do those. So, you know, how that works. That language in the inspection would need to change and these are residential homes that were built probably all within the last hundred years, but at different times. Buildings are inspected, of course, upon completion. And so when a building inspection, when a building inspector goes out to inspect it, they're going to inspect it per the code that existed upon buildings completion, fire code. Same thing. So, you know, that's what they're going to be looking at as far as safety. If there are additional safety aspects like lighting of exits and so forth, that, you know, may not be part, of course, that's not commonly seen in residential homes. But there may be certain things that were not part of code in nineteen fifty five, nineteen seventy three that are now required. So if there are certain things that you want to touch on and add, and maybe some things that aren't included at all. This lighting that we're talking about, if you want to add those in, then those go in the life safety section as a specific to melon requirement. And then, you know, we would just reference them here in exterior sky sketches. If you're keeping that language and it sounds like you want to, that, you know, would provide information to the city or or fire inspector. Of course, you know, if it's just a city requirement, it might not be something the fire inspector looks at. You know, that that would be something to consult with the fire inspector about. But this will change depending on what you do later, is my point.
Okay.
Later on in the ordinance.
Right.
But thank you.
Okay, so are we going down to three? The registration renewal?
Did we want to break out the separate sections under two? Did we, we haven't addressed this, whether we wanted to break, you know, in the planning version, they're not broke out. In the addition version additions that we've been asked to look at. Did we want to break these out individually?
Sounds like we're just about line.
No, we're, it's I wish you had this copy, Andrew, to serve.
Two seventy one. And we would need to. Because the inspection will be changing from, you know, to a mandatory inspection that would need to be completely rewritten. And yes, it would need to specifically cite fire inspection and building code inspection. You know, based upon the year the building was written, I have some some model language that I could read to you now, or if we're going to continue kind of getting there. You know, that I'll I'll read to you what it would look like.
Sounds like we're on the same page and and.
Wait till you get, I'm good. Okay, just want to make sure we didn't skip it over or something.
So we'll rewrite and inspect you.
So I think we are at three now, Rich.
Hey, so where are we?
Are we at the renewal section?
That's where I'm at.
Registration renewal, any problems? Updates?
Just giving you a minute on registration.
Okay.
I mean, under the renewal section. Tell me about missing it. There'll probably be a list of things that you need to put there that are required and to the renewal.
Renewal will be the same thing unless there's changes. So every year they have to renew. And we know under the proposed legislation that didn't pass, that the legislature was going to specifically limit cities to just an annual registration, which is exactly what this states. So every year, you know, they would simply renew the registration and have to submit any updates or changes. And that's also bleeds into the next section. So, you know, the execution of a renewal affidavit, it would simply be like, okay, hey, you know, it's it's new year. All these requirements and submissions, there's no changes, or if there are changes. You know, they would sign an affidavit saying that there are no changes. If there are changes, then they have to update that at that time, and they're also required to update the chain, any change as the changes occur. And that's in part four.
Right. So with the renewal, we're going to get things like a copy of the updated permit or license. Yeah, okay.
Exactly. And I can make that a little bit more detailed, if that's a concern, that, you know, all updated, updated information will be provided, updated documents rather. You know, current documents. I don't know when. The only caveat with that, though, is this is tagged to October first of each year. What I don't know off the top of my head is when each of these documents are issued by each of these agencies.
A bigger look at the timeline says we get to the end of this and shore those up.
Right.
And I think it's, you know, good for the public and people listening to know that the timelines in here are not hidden.
No, they're not. I can't wait.
In any case, this date, you know, this is tagged to a fiscal year and each of these, they're just a vacation. Rental owner is simply tasked with providing whatever is most current. So, you know, we can certainly look at when each of these is issued, and if there's a date that's better than October first, the fiscal year just seems to be the standard. I think it will all jive, but you know, that's that's something that could be adjusted, just as as you noted.
Okay, just for clarification, Andrew, so there'll be one paragraph, but the intent of that paragraph will be to cover things like proof of current FDB licensing. Proof of satisfactory fire code inspection. Proof of Florida building code inspection type things.
Well, this will look all the way, it'll look exactly the way that it is. All the registration renewal is doing is requiring, you know, this to all be updated. So in essence, and it's it's talking about in here, the execution of a renewal affidavit. We don't need to put this all in the code because it's referencing the renewal affidavit. So that is another document that would need to be created, which is going to have that checklist. You'd essentially have your initial application and you'll have, you know, you'll be creating several documents to administer this ordinance.
Right.
And one would be the renewal affidavit, and that would just simply have this checklist on it again. So to keep the ordinance simple, it really doesn't need to be in there because it's already been addressed above.
Thank you. Gotcha.
Very good. I followed what you were saying there. That was great.
Followed you good. I didn't. We're good. So we're four, four.
And counsel, this section is one of those that may change depending on what you all decide to do. You know, if parking is going to be addressed later in a separate section, you know, I can make these changes depending. So these are all conversations, again, you can have now or have later on in the ordinance where those sections are addressed. But ultimately, all this section stating is saying, hey, look, if any of these things changes, you've got to update and let the city know.
And I did like that addition by the planning council for E about the change of status in licensure. I think that's helpful clarification. Next section looks like.
Five.
I am good with five. No problem.
Six.
I'm also good with six. Right, no good.
Yeah. So we aren't going to process registration or renewal if the property has unresolved code violation or code enforcement lien. And then maybe this is a logistical question, so because of the way that the annual renewal will run, we'll always know that the fire, is is fire, is fire safety annual? Fire safety inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
At least that's the feedback from what I've heard, the the direction you want to go, annual inspections on the, on these things.
Yeah.
As a part of the process.
The annual inspection will assure that the annual fire inspection will assure that those needs are are met. So I guess it wouldn't have to be included in this section.
Well, it's a code violation, so you know, there's, there's other things in in code enforcement, I mean, grass that's not cut, for instance, is just a you know, that's something that's easily remedied, but it's talking about those type of things. If somebody has a, you know, either a outstanding violation or a lien on their house because they have huge overgrowth. That's something, and that's not something, you know, that would be included here, that that wouldn't be part of a fire inspection. There is some state suggested language on it, but again, didn't pass, and and they said something similar. Theirs was a little bit more detailed. It just said that a local government may terminate or refuse to issue a registration if there is an unsatisfied recorded municipal lien or county lien on the real property of the vacation rental. But the local government must allow the vacation rental owner at least sixty days before the termination of an active registration to satisfy the lien or county code lien. And and that's some language that would be great to borrow. Simply put, you know, if you do have, if somebody were to receive a lien, they're going to lose their registration per the state suggested rules. If if they don't do something about it within that timeline. So one of my thoughts would be, you know, simply upgrading this language, which is again, pretty standard with, you know, some legislation that was proposed by the state, it's a good roadmap.
I am too. I'm good with that.
I think my question about the fire thing was like, sort of completely separate, that if they're doing their annual fire safety inspection, that's coming back in with their renewal paperwork. Then we would be felt, and some of this goes into process, but we would be following up with them to correct those things at that time. So you couldn't get your renewal if your fire safety wasn't up to spec anyway, so we wouldn't have to add it again in this section.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're doing good. Can I say something about that right now?
Um. I have learned over the last few weeks that, and I hope I say this correctly. But we have not have a fire inspection of any business in this town in over a year. Because there is no one to do it. My bus putting this in this ordinance. We're requiring a fire inspection, but whether they're going to be able to obtain that may be a bit of a problem. To add some clarification. That is because nobody has requested them. We need, because I've been working with Public Works, we're going to come up with a list of our buildings to get it so we get in compliance. Because we also have not been having the fire inspections, because we reach out to them by. Verbally, we get told that, well, we don't have the manpower to do it. We are paying for this service.
Right.
But when you go through the, the contract with the fire department. So what I've asked Chad to do is create a list, it's an Excel list of our buildings, submit that to the fire people. And then, once they have something in writing, it takes all the verbal. You know, makes it a little bit more tougher for them to get out of it. So they are available, it just is by request, and so the, just as we will have to, the short term rental owners will have to request these.
Okay.
So if I'm hearing you right, Tim, you're essentially saying that. Requests can be made for these fire inspections and that we, and that the city does have a contract to get it done. And that we're sort of all going to get on the same page here at the same time because it's identified it's a recent problem in the city.
Correct.
Okay. That seems as though we're treating everyone the same.
Okay. Counsel, one thing I have to provide you some information there on, the city code requires annual fire inspections for commercial businesses. They just have not been happening. So it's not, it should not be a matter of requesting, ultimately, I think, to, to really make this ordinance work and to comply with the, the current code. The city would have to either, you know, come to an arrangement that, hey, the county's going to do those inspections or. Come to an arrangement that somebody else is going to do them. Now, the city also has the ability to finance those with, or to bill. You know, the. Inspector. So in other words. You know, if it's an issue of manpower of Marion County, the city could contract with another fire inspection service and those costs will be passed on, and they're usually negligible costs, I mean. I have a city that just adopted a fire inspection fee and I think it's seventy-five or one hundred dollars for inspection. But that would be passed on to the, like I said, the whoever's being inspected. And that may or may not take some additional legwork, I'll have to get with Mandy on that, to see what the city has and resolutions for, for that, but it would certainly take some arrangements. To figure out exactly who's going to be doing these, since they haven't been being done, but they are required to be done.
Right, right. My personal opinion is, we do not want to get into that business. We have a hard time doing all that we have now. Except for our own properties. Right. We must do our own properties.
Right.
But if you pull that thread, Andrew, it'll be, we can make the decision with intelligence at that point. If you pull that thread on what you just spoke about.
Okay, but, but do you mean, when you say that you don't want to get into that business, are you talking about, I mean, not city personnel doing the inspections, but somebody else doing the inspections?
The city tracking, because we're talking about short term rentals. I don't think the city wants to get into business of tracking whether short term rentals have been. Fire inspected other than through the application. Process any more than we want to see if Walmart's had their, their inspection.
Well, that's the thing, the city is required to per, currently.
But from how I understand it.
But not.
The, the application comes in and then the, and then the short term rental owner goes out and they get their inspection and they get their paperwork and they bring it back to the city and they say, here, it's done, it's part of my. Application. Now, whether the, whether the city offers the service through. The county fire or whether the short term rental owner finds their own person to do the inspection. Is that, does that speak to what you're?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is we don't want Walmart, we don't want short term rental owners up at Loretta's window. Requesting somebody in here to do the legwork to get a fire inspection.
Well, I think really what's, what's required, because they're required to have those annual inspections, and that really is, the impetus is on the city to provide those inspections, whether contractually or by some other means. So in other words, yes, those businesses should be, all be getting inspected and they should be proving to the city that they passed inspection. So in other words, the city should have a contract with a fire inspector to provide those inspections and annually those should be happening. Now, they don't necessarily have to be part of the registration process, per se, but everybody should be getting inspected annually.
I agree.
And that's, that's what the code says.
Right, I agree, but. So if I'm Walmart, do I come into the city to, to have the city arrange?
If, if, if the city had a fire department. Every year, the fire department would go out and do those inspections because of BTRs coming in, business tax receipts. City knows which commercial businesses be inspected. And then the fire department goes out and makes those inspections and the businesses that are inspected. Would pay for those inspections, but those inspections are triggered by city actions.
Okay. Okay. Mandy, did we just open up Pandora's box?
Maybe, what I understand is true, when we had our own fire department, our firefighters went around and did.
Correct.
All the annual inspections.
That's what I understand also. Okay.
So, and it is required by the code and.
Right, right, okay.
I mean.
So.
Haven't been doing it since we, and I know it isn't the contract with the county that they would do the annual.
Right, right. How else is it getting off base? Can you add it to the next workshop agenda that?
Yeah, how we got off track with that.
Right, that we get back on track with this, figure out how to get back on track. I don't want to fix that here because it's, we'll stick with short term rentals here, okay, and let's fix this bigger problem. At another workshop.
Yeah.
Could we look at contracting, putting out an RFP for a fire inspector?
We're already paying for it.
We're already paying for it.
We have a contract.
We have a contract.
Marion County Fire Department, who do that, we're paying that bill.
I see.
And they're supposed to do it.
Right.
So let me follow up there with some conversations about why it's not happening. Can it happen? What are the barriers?
Got it.
And then alternatives if we can't work it out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Fine, okay.
Alright.
For new, for new.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for taking that lead off, Andrew. Alright.
Oh, where are we at?
We were right around two sixty-four, we were just starting, say, page, the page on seven of fourteen, two fifty-five, because we were discussing the parking and we. We moved down farther the inspection, so we'd be around two seventy-one.
Could I get the section number as opposed to the line number, please?
Okay, that would be section.
Seven.
Section seven, right.
Okay, two forty-two.
What I do with inspections.
And I do have some proposed language for you on these, to update these. Basically, I think what your inspection would look like, some good language here, inspection of a vacation rental to verify compliance with the Florida Building Code and the Florida Fire and Safety Codes, which governed at the time of completion of the subject of construction. Shall be required subsequent to the initial registration and annually after each renewal. If instances of noncompliance are found, all such instances of noncompliance shall be handled as other violations of FBC and Florida Life Safety Codes are otherwise handled. And I have some other language about, you know, making an appointment.
Okay.
But I would, I would update the, the code and replace that language there.
Number eight?
I'm rolling over section seven.
Oh, okay. But Andrew, what you were just speaking to, that was speaking to section seven?
Yes, of either replacement, and I, I, I kind of shortened it, I can read you the full language, if, if you'd like me to read it out loud, I know it doesn't, it's. It's a little bit more helpful to have it in print, copy for everyone, but I can, I can certainly send it to you. But if you'd like me to read it.
Would you read it, is it real long?
No.
Yeah, would you read it one more time?
Sure. This would read something similar to this. Inspection of a vacation rental to verify compliance with the Florida Building Code and the Florida Fire and Life Safety Codes, which governed at the time of completion of the subject of construction. Shall be required subsequent to the initial registration of the vacation rental and annually after each renewal. If instances of noncompliance are found, all such instances of noncompliance shall be handled as other violations of the Florida Building Code. And fire and safety codes are otherwise handled in the city. These requirements will not be imposed so as to affect contracts that preexist the effective date of the ordinance. Annual inspections shall be made by the city through appointment with the vacation rental or agent as applicable. If city inspector, in, in this case, a contractor, has made an appointment with vacation rental or agent as applicable for inspection. And the inspector is unable to complete the inspection as a result of an action or inaction of the vacation rental owner agent. Or an occupant of the vacation rental, the vacation rental owner shall be charged a reinspection fee in an amount sent by resolution of the city to cover the inspection expense incurred. And it just kind of goes on through that, I, I think it's just giving the process, but that kind of tells you what. We'd be looking to replace that language with for annual inspections.
Is there anything that states? Who pays for that inspection?
Uh, yes, that would be paid by the registrant.
Okay. And are we using, what timeframe are we using to? Does that use to get into compliance?
Well, I think the way that this is, you know, they have the registration process, and so hopefully. That makes sense what I said before, the registration inspection are, are linked, but they're not the same thing. They would fill out the registration and then they get their. Inspection. If they don't pass inspection, then it's handled just like inspection in the city, which means they have time to come and compliance and they can operate. Right, so it's not really part of the registration process, it's more of a, a compliance issue.
Okay.
And. As far as timeframes go, you know, that timeframe for violations. Now, there's also a timeframe aspect here where the city has to get everything in order of how just inspections are going to work in general with the city. So, you know, I think that will play itself out as that issue is tackled. Because this issue here, you know, we're looking at an ordinance which realistically is going to take probably at least two or three months to, to make it through and get adopted. And from there, probably another six months or so before it really becomes effective. So you're setting out. How inspections will work, then there's also the legwork of just getting inspections fixed. So I think that's, if that's what you mean by timeframe, we're going to have. Plenty of time to get whatever inspection process that Manny needs to work out with Marion County or somebody else.
Right, okay, and that's, sounds like, that's geared towards the application process. How about if it's an operating? They've received a permit, they've received their license, and there's a violation, where do we address the timeframe? For them to get back in compliance?
That's handled, just it'll maybe handle it just like any other fire or safety inspection, you know, something, some other failure throughout the city to come into compliance. I don't know off the top of my head what they are, but if Walmart had, for instance, a violation, they would have a certain amount of time given by the fire inspector to come into compliance or they fail, right? Same thing here, it's going to be handled just like Walmart.
Gotcha. Okay.
I think this may have been addressed when we had opened that previous can of worms, but I just want to. Clarify that, who's, who schedules the?
The, the property owner.
Property owner, okay.
The business owner.
Business owners have to do it.
Okay. Thanks.
Ultimately, they'd be making an appointment with the inspector.
Right.
And I think what would happen is if you have Marion County who's doing it, or if you have a contractor, they're going to probably send out a letter and say, hey, look, your annual inspection's coming up. We've got a window of these ninety days where we can do your inspection. Then they would call the inspector. City staff are calling the inspector and saying, okay, well, I've got tenants in this time, but I've got a good time on this day, they set up an appointment. And the language I was reading, you know, essentially if it goes down the way it should, inspection shows up, the bill's paid. They're on their way and running if everything is good. If there's a tenant who says, no, you're not coming in here, and the inspector has to leave, will they get charged a fee for that? And we would have to address that, you know, potentially by resolution. But that would apply to all inspections. That's just, you know, another. A can of worms that we have to fix.
Sure.
Outside of this ordinance.
Okay.
Just fire inspections in general.
Okay.
Ready, number eight?
Yes.
Number eight, evidence of vacation rental operation.
I didn't have a problem with that.
Nor did I, I'm good there.
I'm good there.
Nine. False information.
Probably.
Okay, ten. I'm good with that. Okay, ten, we did there. Number C, vacation rental standards. Then now we get into the life safety standards. The swimming pool, the spa.
I just need a minute on this section because I think this is one I want to compare with the planning. Like, you know, the before and after.
So we're on the minimum life standard?
Yes.
I just have a question for you, Andrew. Just as a general question, this thing talks about swimming pools, spas and hot tubs. I don't know how many vacation rentals have those things, but I do know a lot of vacation rentals in this town sit on a river. Do we need to address river safety on any of this? I mean, that's what hit me when I read this.
Yeah, I, I think the swimming pool, spa and hot tub safety, that language is borrowed, you know. Florida, the entire state.
Right.
People come on vacation here. But where these are really hot, you know, and there are rivers, but what Florida really has are beaches. And where we see most of the model regulations coming from, or even most, the regulations that I've worked on, quite frankly, are in beach towns, which have condominiums.
Right.
So this pool language, yeah, it's coming guaranteed from, you know, an ordinance that's contemplating condominiums. So addressing, if you have somebody who's coming out for building code violations, they're going to be looking at docks. You know, we can say something about that, or just leave it to the building code to come out there and look at the dock, because that's going to be part of the property and they're going to have to.
Okay.
So if you want to make the swimming pools go away, that's fine, they're still going to be coming out there and looking at.
No, I don't, I don't necessarily want it to go away, I was just, when I read this, it just triggered in my mind, do, do we need to say anything about rivers? I mean. I don't know how you'd even address it.
I think it's understood as far, if we're talking about docks and structures, you know, that's going to be part of the inspection.
Sure.
So, so there's that. Now, with the swimming pools and so far, how you want to go about that, that's requiring compliance with the current code. You know, a lot of pools might have been constructed in the eighties, nineties, and that's not going to have the same thing, so, you know. It depends on if you want them to be up to date, not up to date. I haven't heard a lot of controversy about that, maybe it is controversial. But that could come out, no matter what, the pools, spas and hot tubs are going to get inspected.
Right.
So do they really need to be updated to the, the Residential Swimming Pool and Safety Act? I don't know, that's probably a really good question for an inspector.
Right.
And, you know, we could modify that based on building inspector says. But it is a regulation that we do see out there, so I included it.
Okay.
I don't think that we need something specific that I'm aware of, to, I don't live on the river, though. But I do know that the docks would be getting inspected, and I think that would probably be the biggest thing, right? We don't want somebody walking out there and falling through a plank that, that's rotted away.
Absolutely, you know, that, to me, the docks would be part of your building inspection, any kind of dock, bridge, whatever. That's got to be maintained because of just somebody falling through it, and so I get that. Now, I just, it's all registered with me and it was just like, hmm. I just, it's all registered with me and it was just like, hmm. I don't know how you even do something like, like you say, you talk about the beach. I don't know how you regulate that. I mean, you can't.
Pretty much, I think what you'd be looking there is keeping the boardwalks or anything in excess and any kind of beach access stairs or anything.
Okay.
You know, they'd be looking at the stairs, because typically there's that sort of that access point.
Yeah, alright.
I guess I would just say about uh swimming pools, I see uh here it says um apply the current standards of uh set forth in Florida, chapter five fifteen. And in looking at that, it's pretty detailed as far as um you know, alarms and fences and barriers and things that have to happen, so when that's inspected, I'm assuming everything from that would be like essentially a checklist for the inspector, right?
Yes.
So there's not a lot listed here, but there sure is a lot in the state statute when it comes right down to it.
Right, and 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 again, that's a policy question of how far do you want to go? Do you want to require up compliance with that is up to date or compliance, you know, back in 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 the nineteen eighties? How far do you want to go into the the swimming pools? You know, I I don't know if they're with the if that's something that there's pushback on or not pushback on. Um, but that's purely a policy choice that that you all can make.
True. Alright. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I don't know if y'all are, but I am. I mean, to me, the checklist, I mean, the inspector's going to inspect all this, and I guess the only question is what you're saying, Andrew, do we direct someone inspecting to use current standards or standards when the house was built, hand standards when the pool was built? Because they're going to be way different. I mean, I go back, like, say, twenty or thirty years. Didn't they require fences around pools? A lot of them didn't.
I don't know. And I don't, I don't know what the cost would be, you know, to make those upgrades.
Right. Okay. Um.
Rec, since you're following this, would it be practical for you to contact a building inspector? And ask what they typically do on the norm, you know, for an older house, for a new house, is there any difference? I don't think we want to get into itemizing here, because as everything changes, we're going to have to keep up with the changes in this document.
Okay. I did actually call the building inspector. It's been months ago, um. And Manny, you gave me the guy's name that runs our billing inspections anyway, and I talked to him about inspections and how much it would cost, and he was saying generally a home inspection is about a hundred bucks.
Okay.
Uh, but we can call him specifically about the um about the pools and spas and all that.
Right, and um, and especially the uh uh, if they typically do it at current standards, or if they do it as as built standards. Um.
Wow.
You know, so we stay in line with what the norm is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think safety around these, when you have people coming into people with young kids and they're on the vacation, they're coming into a house that they're unfamiliar with, and then there's the pool. I think that, you know, when we think about safety of something like short-term rentals, pools is certainly um, important.
Yeah, absolutely. There you go. Hmm. Some mess.
Okay.
Okay, B, smoking carbon monoxide detection systems? It was added in instead of a hardwired system that they have a ten-year battery-powered system with a ten, with a ten-year battery.
What do you think about that?
Oh, what I?
My only concern with it is, is it, if the power goes out in the house and they've got a hardwired system, it's not going to work.
Mm hmm.
So if they've got a battery backup, then it just becomes, at what point do it's going to be on them to make sure that the battery works in the ten-year system?
Right. And I know with mine, mine have both.
Yeah.
In my house, uh, you have batteries in, they're hardwired, and if the battery goes dead, it immediately beeps.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, but that's the system, that's the, you know, alarms I have in my house. But I know some of them that are just battery-operated, I think, if I remember right, that's what I had in my house in Birmingham. They were just batteries, and if it got a certain amount of battery life left, it would start just beeping over and over and over again till you replace the battery.
Generally, when you have a an inspection, say, I could give you your yearly inspection of the fire alarm, the guy goes by and checks them all, so.
Right, right.
They could check the batteries.
Uh, my question on this one is uh um, I forgot all the definitions, what short-term rentals fall under as far as uh, I know they're not motels, hotels, but wherever they fall under.
Transient lodging.
Transient lodging.
Right.
Um, what are the state and county requirements? That's what we at a minimum, we cannot be less than that anyways.
Right.
I had a note here to refer to rule sixty-nine A, but I have to be real honest, I'm having a hard time. Uh, I have to look it up because I don't remember what it refers to without.
As part of Florida Administrative Code? That would be under the Division of the State Fire Marshal.
Yeah, okay. But we should be in line of what the fire marshal suggests, correct?
Right.
Right.
The change that was added is conflicting, so are we all on the same page with that?
Yeah, so we need to find out what the state, but what 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 the process for Dun Allen or for Marion County?
Mm hmm.
And then.
For transient lodging?
Yeah.
For transient lodging.
And then make sure we're in line with that.
Yeah, I can, I can just see that, you know, like I say, take an older home, they're not hardwired, you're going to have to spend the money. And if a battery one will suffice, you know, I'm good with it, but again, I agree with you. If that's, we got to look, see what the inspector says.
Right, yeah.
Ultimately, too, if that's sufficient, you know, uh for the city, a lot of this stuff can go away because it's all going to be part of that fire inspection, because you're doing any fire inspections.
See, that's what I'm, we've got all this written in here, and once you have a fire inspection, it should all be inspected. It it, this ought to be in inspection, and so repeating it here like fire extinguishers, I mean, they're not past fire extinguishers.
Right.
Yeah, if it's not, you know, somewhere in, you know, where it's readily marked and you can find it and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, just, yeah, we'll see the need to repeat everything in this.
Right.
You know, other than one paragraph, comply with whatever.
Right.
Unless you have thoughts.
The reason for the language is just to get a certain minimal everybody on the same standard because of the when you're looking from, you know, a variety of years back, certain things.
Sure.
You know, some communities want to have a standard, okay, fire alarms are going to be done this way.
Right.
You know, but but ultimately, yeah, that's that's the duty of the fire department, and we can take that out.
Right.
Um, that's all up to you.
Do you think keeping it in helps the short-term rental owners? Well, I guess we'll have it on checklists and.
That's what I was thinking, the checklist, right.
So it might not be as as necessary to have it here for them.
And and it depends what comes back, you know, from the county when when you find that, but.
Okay.
Okay.
These are.
Yeah, the checklist's going to be much easier for somebody to go through.
Oh, absolutely. Um, if you just hand them a checklist and let them go through it, right.
And that'll address like details about where, because I know there's a lot of talk at planning about where these uh fire extinguishers would be, but you're saying that once we get in touch with the the fire marshal and ask these questions, that those kinds of things should be clarified as well.
Correct, exactly.
And the reason to, you know, that you do see them in the codes is for that reason, I think that some communities really are worried about that safety or they've had issues with it, so they put it in the code just for someone to read, and it's redundant, but it's redundant by design.
Gotcha.
So, um, you know, again, that's however you all want to go with, apparently there's a little bit of homework to do, but you know, you can.
I'll tell you.
Depends what you find.
Rex, if, when you get a hold of the fire inspector and the re- building inspector, you know, these kind of questions we ought to ask, you know, what do y'all recommend for smoke alarms, uh OT, O, CO2, you know, detectors? Um, and that kind of stuff. What do, what do you recommend? What is required uh for residency and what is required for short-term rental?
Right.
And all that.
Okay.
Um, because again, I think if it's in the checklist they're going through, and again, maybe we can eliminate some of it. But I I agree with you on, but let's make sure we get the minimum standard they want.
One other thing you can do in addition to that, you do require that certain safety information be provided, and if you don't want to have it in the ordinance, like some communities.
Mm hmm.
You know, that's just something that would be required to be in the pamphlets. We could add a requirement in there. Uh, and so then it's handed out, you know, to each of these uh, anybody who rents, they're going to see it in the pamphlet. Okay, well, here's where we have fire extinguishers here, where we have uh uh smoke alarms, et cetera.
That's where I know I I rent a lot of houses, when I, Kathy and I travel, and um and a lot of times they have pamphlets, booklets, whatever, and they tell you where, you know, how to get out of the house, where the fire extinguishers are and all that kind of stuff. And and to me, that's extremely important for somebody who doesn't live there. Also, if it was as simple as a pamphlet and they had it in there, the problem is, does everybody read it? No, but you know, if you've got half a brain, you ought to read it, just so you know, you know, where the hospital is, where where the police is and all this kind of stuff, so.
Unfortunately, if they're not reading the pamphlet, they're probably not reading the city code.
I was going to say, they're not reading any of this. No, I get that. Okay. All right. So next, battery-powered emergency signs that were deleted. Um. Y'all have any part feelings on that?
My only problem with that is that if you have a power failure in a house and you have transient housing, the people do not know the layout of the house, and there may be party, and they may not be in the condition to make sane and rational judgments and run into a closet.
Mm hmm.
And it probably would be a good thing to put back in, because when it's dark and something happens, people will panic.
Okay. Um, just so that we're ready for the other side of the coin, um, how's this line up? With uh county-state requirements for transient lodging, you know?
I'm not, I couldn't say for sure that it's required, because I don't think that they have a separate code to that, but I I think that's something, if if you're already going to be contacting a building inspector, um, that they're going to have experience with and could could make a recommendation.
Cool.
Uh, but you you know, again, yes, some communities do require it because they have that concern.
Okay.
So when I talk to.
It's not one I see often, but it is one that I see.
Ask them about that too, um. Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Don't get me wrong, I just want to be ready for the folks that don't agree.
Oh, no, no, I I know what you're saying.
Yeah, and I definitely heard the argument like, well, I exit lighting in a house, the door's right over there, but I do think that it, there's cause for concern that these are not, uh, that these are businesses, and these are not people who are living in these houses on the regular.
Mm hmm.
I'll just say, I spent thirty-two years in fire rescue as a lieutenant. When things go wrong, people make poor decisions.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay.
Okay. Emergency egress maintenance, I don't see, uh, fire extinguishers.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't see a problem with that.
Mm hmm.
Um, emergency egress.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Okay, down to number two, maximum occupancy. Mostly here, wait.
We skipped one.
Get on this page.
Landline.
Okay, landline telephone. I don't thi- I think that that's okay to take out, because everybody's got a cell phone.
Right. I know, we at our house don't even have a landline anymore. We haven't had.
No, we don't. The only problem, the only problem is, or nothing we can do about it, is the phone service in some parts of the city is really bad.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe a note to put in there that uh advise them to do wifi calling with the password, because I know in in my house,
Mm hmm.
if the wifi goes out, I've got to stand at the sacred spot in the backyard.
Right, okay. Right. No, I agree, because our wifi service in Dun Allen is not extremely reliable.
Right.
Um, but I agree, nobody has a landline anymore, so I don't have a problem taking that out. Okay.
Okay, number two, maximum occupancy.
This is where personally I get a lot of mixed feelings about this. And it, on the one hand, I don't like this under age six, but on the other hand, do we regulate this for residents in our town? And I don't think we do. Um, now, I don't know how many people have sixteen or more people living in a home, but we don't regulate that. Uh, and I'm, I'm concerned that trying to regulate is going to be hard.
This is one of those that, you know, would be good to to look at with the comp plan.
Right.
And and be a separate regulation.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. If if we address it in the comp plan, we need to address it here. Uh, I I like two per bedroom plus two and all that, but how are you going to really, how are you going to enforce it, number one? Unless you're like me, walk down the street and see twenty-five cars in front of somebody's house. Um, but then are they really spending the night? Are they just there for the day? And I agree, I think we need to address this in our comp plan on how in a residence is is a reasonable number for our people. And then whatever that rule comes out to be, that's what we do with residential rentals. That's just my thought.
Council likes to move in that direction. That is following the cue from the state.
See, that's, that's the other thing I'm thinking. If this is where we're going, and it does make sense. I don't want to be challenged over the fact we're not doing we're doing different for the short-term rentals than we are for residents. Although.
Anything, anything more than sixteen is a commercial classification, right?
I get it.
So if I got sixteen people living in the house next door, I may figure out who I can call.
No, no, I I don't disagree with that. So maybe we need to address that. What I'm thinking is we need to address that for all of Dun Allen. Not just short-term rentals. But y'all, please chime in with your thoughts. Because I agree, I mean, I I've seen a lot of people in a lot of houses, especially in my street, and only one of them is a short-term rental, the rest of them are just homes, and they got a lot of people in those houses. That's just life.
So what do we just say? Do we just, as it is for right now, until we see what the state's going to do?
Well, I would say not until we see what the state's going to do, but maybe um what we can do, you know, with our comprehensive plan, which again is years out. It's not fast, but. Um.
So are we suggesting that we would leave?
Just leave this like it is?
Leave it like it is, two per bedroom plus two, uh, max sixteen persons. And uh children under six uh will not be included in the calculation of the max occupancy.
Yeah.
Look at children under four are not included?
I I tell you, with.
Brenda, can you chime in on how y'all came up with age six? Just. Um, I I don't know how.
Well, I figured there was.
One.
Okay.
There's a.
Okay.
Okay. Hmm. I'd say we just leave it like it is until we find something better.
Right, or if we find out that it's really an issue.
Right.
Um. You know, we come back and uh and take a look at it.
Yeah, uh, generally, I can't imagine that we're talking about many homes that are going to have sixteen people spending the night. But when you have college kids come down here for spring break, you know, they can put sixteen people in one bedroom, so, you know, you know.
Just for clarification, council, are we talking about leaving it as it is? Are you, are you talking about leaving it in the ordinance or removing it and then addressing it, you know, via comprehensive legislation? You know, in the future.
I think the consensus is that leaving it as it is may be the safest while we work to address it in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
But we're open to what you think.
I think, uh, you know, that depends, that becomes a a policy decision. I think that's one of those areas where, you know, it has, you've seen some, some controversy that, you know, was brought up, I think. Uh, you've had some objections to it. Um, and it's just a matter of, and certainly occupancy is addressed across the board in other ordinances. We've also seen the state saying, no, you can't do that anymore, and we have issues with Fair Housing Act, which really shouldn't, should not apply here. And so the question is. And so the question is to remove it, see if there's a problem, but I guess you have three options. One is to leave it as is in the ordinance. You know, that's an area that that can cause some controversy, may may or may or may not. You can leave it in here. You could remove it. Wait and see how the registration process goes and then add it back in at a later date if you're continuing to have a problem. Or you can. Remove it now, go through the comprehensive planning process and create something across the board, which is what the state is contemplating, but you know, didn't pass their thing. So there's really three options.
Right.
Um, you know, one of the things that that I would advise, one of the things I think that a lot of cities do is. And I'm not saying this is happening here by this by any means, but some cities have a tendency to over regulate. Uh, and there's a lot of value to, there is some value, I think, to a wait and see type of thing where, hey. You know, you're already making a lot of changes. Um, if this registration process doesn't fix some of the things that might come along with occupancy, well, it's very easy to add it back in. It takes two readings. You know, really, really three, because it's got to go to planning first, they would look at it, so you have, essentially, it takes a month. Um, you put it back in. So if it's one of those things that's causing the short term rental people a lot of heartburn, yeah, you could take it out and you could see and then put it back in. Or or you could go with it as it is, um, you know, you have a lot of options here.
Does, Mandy, I don't know this, so I'm gonna ask a dumb question, but does our comprehensive plan say anything about residential? Occupancy maximums, number of people in a home or anything like that? Are you aware of that?
It does not.
I'm not.
No, it does not. I called out the, uh, specific parts of the plan that, you know, were relevant. Really, probably what you would see is the city, you'd see something in a policy that. If this were looked at by a planner, someone presumably who you're going to be hiring soon to start a process. You know, what I would anticipate they would look at is crafting some language, um, within the comprehensive plan, saying the city shall consider. Occupancy limitations for rental properties. And then from there, you know, they're going to be crafting, uh, working, probably. You know, working through an ordinance to then establish and implement that policy, which is going to be across the board regulations on occupancy.
Right.
Um, you know, if if you go the comprehensive plan route. Now, you know, that's not the only solution. Again, at any point in time, if this doesn't become part of the initial ordinance, you can go ahead and. Pop it right back in there whenever you want to.
Mm hmm.
Uh, where do our zoning laws come into effect? If we're R one A, if a short term rental is in our way, R one A. Zoning area.
They really don't.
I, that with Andrew to have that conversation because, um. Because I had the same thought, but he explained to me that it, that it doesn't really apply.
Because essentially what short term rentals are, you know, it's, the state has. Has made the mandate that you have to allow rental properties and that doesn't, you know, that's across the board and zoning. It doesn't matter. It's a single family home, so doesn't, whether it's a, you know, a high density, single family home designation or a a low density. Either way, you know, whether it's farmland and you've got five acres or whether you've got, you know, eight units to an acre. Rules are the same.
I see, okay.
Yeah, actually, my house is in A one, so. And the short term rental in houses around me were all residents, so. I don't, and I was glad to see it just says city limits, so that's.
And I was hoping that being in a low density area that that we might be able to put some things in, uh, to limit. The people there, um, because we do have sometimes fifteen people packed into a three bedroom house.
Oh, yeah. No, no.
And it's a problem, but.
I got it. Okay.
Okay, so how about the, uh, so these are, this is considered, uh, transient lodging? Um, if the occupancy is greater than sixteen, what does that do with the, uh? With the fire code, as far as, uh, does it bump it up from transient to something else?
Um, I I couldn't say, you know, the sixteen, that's a a standard. Um, how it's implemented in in other parts of of statutes, I I can't say right off the top of my head. Um, but sixteen is generally what is considered to be, you know, the maximum for, uh, residential and.
Yeah. Then you start getting in commercial, don't you? If you get above that.
General speaking, yes. It's tied to the Florida Building Code and Facility Housing, you know, uh. But, um. For a building code doesn't apply to single family.
But.
When it comes to occupancy, so I will tell you where you have seen some lawsuits and so forth, they are related to occupancy. It's like Marco Island and so forth, do not regulate occupancy for that reason.
Mm hmm.
Um, and Fair Housing Act gets a little tricky, so, you know. Hence the idea with some options of really focusing and honing in on that to craft something that's very, very specific. Um, in case there's a problem.
Right.
Uh, there are some other provisions in here that hopefully would handle those issues.
Mm hmm.
So that's one of the the reasons I'm kind of drawing attention to it. One of those that's a a really good option for a wait and see, but if you all feel very strongly about it. Um, you know, it's just one that does come with slightly more exposure than other areas, which are more rock solid and insulated. At the end of the day, anybody can file a lawsuit, right?
Right.
Um, whether it's frivolous or not.
Right, you don't know. Part of the major reasons for this ordinance are the amount of people that sometimes get put in these neighborhoods in these homes. So is the consternation. Uh, A, B. And C, A being two persons per bedroom.
Mm hmm.
Um, or is the consternation over B sixteen max people? And the six children, if we. If we took out the sixteen max people, does that make it more palatable? And just leave the persons per bedroom plus two? Or is the whole thing what everybody's arguing over?
Uh, I I think, well, you have public comment at the end of the meeting.
Right, okay, right, right. You know, having you said that, um, it's ten minutes to seven, um. I do want to allow for public comments. Maybe we stop right here.
Right.
Um, and get and get some public comments about what we've discussed so far. Um, before we do that, though. Again, Brenda, y'all hammered this to death, I I know. Have you heard us? Go off on a tangent or say something that's not in line with what you were hearing? In you, in your discussions, I know that was been months ago, I get that. But I mean, if we gotten off on something that, hey, wait a minute, this was a real can of worms over here and y'all didn't really talk about it. Or you're you're worrying about something that doesn't need to be worried about.
I could invite you up to speak if you like.
Yeah, yeah.
Brenda, G R V L one one six six one Camp Drive. Um, you have to keep in mind, we did have four meetings. But we spent probably only thirty percent of the entire time. Working with the ordinance. The rest of it was taking public comment.
Right.
The rooms were packed.
Right, I know.
People were passionate.
Right.
A lot of Zoom, um, uh, comments, presentations were being made.
Mm hmm.
So it was definitely a a very discussed topic.
Right.
Uh, where I think we're all trying to balance, yes, we need some short term rental regulation. And where I felt initially the approach was a little off. And it goes back to the state of Florida.
Mm hmm.
Qualifying them as a business. You cannot qualify, if I go on vacation and rent my home out a couple of months on vacation, I have not converted my home to a business. You can't regulate. A hu- a occup- uh, owner occupied residence, the same as you would a Comfort Inn that may have an extended stay.
Right.
So that's where it it the the balance comes. And I really like, um, Andrew's approach that some of this can be addressed with a comprehensive plan. With a broad base, and I think that'll keep us out of trouble.
Right.
So.
I I agree with that. Um, the more I listen to this, I mean, I I have, I'm passionate about certain things in here. Because I I have experienced them, but I have to step back and say. But what makes sense and what, what can we get done and control? Without stubbing our toe along the way. Is where I'm going, you know, even though I'm very passionate about some things. Okay.
Thank you, Brenda.
Um. Mandy, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, I thought we would.
Uh, several people on Zoom, if you want me to start there or do you want me to start with the ones in the room?
Let's see in the room. Yeah, they took their time to fill up.
Dial, so.
I just make a clarif- uh, clarification as public comment begins, uh, that we're going to time these and limit them to three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah.
The the council, uh, we're not going to entertain questions at this time, is that right?
No, it's just your comments about what we're talking about for three minutes, if you don't mind, Val.
Okay, Viola Sophie, eighteen seven five five Southwest Sixty Street, Dan Allen. I'd like to put to you a what if scenario. What if your family member has decided to come visit? They have three to four kids. They don't want to stay in a hotel because they don't want six people in a room, so they go around and look for an Airbnb. They found my house, I have three bedrooms, perfect form. So they fill out the forms, they do everything that Airbnb requires, they sent me the notification. Now, I'm going to call them and say, thank you for renting. However, I need to know your full name, your date of birth. Your driver's license number and anybody else that's financially obligated, plus your car tag, by the way. Now, if that happened to you, would you be a little offended that I asked you for this personal information? But wait, there's more. Now, I need to know if you've ever been arrested as a sex offender. I need to know if you've dealt with human, human trafficking. I need to know if you're a drug dealer. Has any member in your party been one of these people? Now I bet you're really offended. That is, that I accused you of such things, and when you asked me why, the first thing I'm going to say is because our council. Your family member has demanded this, followed by no more than three cars in the driveway. No more than eight people are allowed in the house, no parties of any kind because you might have a. Uh, noise problem or drugs, no additional people allowed to visit just in case you might have a party. Only members of your family are allowed to stay in the house. Please review the pages in the manual to show you where my house. Where my parking is, where my neighbor's fences are. And also you need to read the regulations on the. The state regarding alligators and wildlife, that's a requirement, you better read that part. The days the trash are going to be put out, check the eval- evacuation route. I put a sign on the door, hopefully you can find the door. How do you think your family would feel for me telling them how to live and behave in a house, plus what they have to read and do? Now put yourself in this position, would you want me to make these same demands on your personal life? When you come to visit this great town, I don't think you would. Instead, you would never come back, you tell your friends never to go to Dan Allen. Now you have successfully killed this city's tourism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Raymond Rice.
Raymond Rice, one one seven six zero Cherokee Circle, Dan Allen. Um, first of all, every S T R owner in this city is a homeowner in this city. Uh, we do. Pardon me?
They're not.
So the S T R owners that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I should have interrupted.
Send Dan Allen.
Not all of them.
It's a point of order, we will not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So for the homeowners that have a home in Dan Allen, S T R owners, we 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 don't want to rent to. Parties, that's, you wouldn't want that in your own home, we don't want it in our home. In the eight years that I've owned my house, uh, I've had one complaint from my neighbor who I became very good friends with. Because they were lighting off fireworks and we called them and they stopped. I'm sorry that you had such a bad experience with the S T R owner. That's, that's a bad apple. We don't want those. Uh, it sounds though that most everything that's in this ordinance. Is already in an ordinance or a law in one form or another, other than the registration. I have no problem operating a registered business with the city. I think it's. Expected that as a business owner, that you follow the proper business, uh, pro- protocols. Uh, the problem that I see is if we create this document. And it basically is about S T R owners. And as an example, the fire inspection, if other businesses weren't. Expected to live up to the ordinances that are on theirs, but ours are going to be enforced. That opens it up to litigation that you are over regulating just us. I think that is a point of concern. If there's nothing in return. For the risk of the litigation that it may create, I think the city is just opening Pandora's box. Um, there's a few things in here, um, that I wanted to address in particular. Uh, and one of them was the personal information. And one of them in here, it says responsible party, and this was on line three forty three, that. We would have to give up personal information of our renters at any time. That the city asked for. This is driver's license, name. Um, and for any reason, not if they broke a regulation or broke a code, but the city just said, I want to know. That guy's information or that family's information. That will open the door for litigation. The personal data is called personal data for a certain reason. Uh, thank you very much for hearing me.
Ida Horton. Okay. I had a request from Katie Geis, um, she's on Zoom. Katie, if you can hear me, would you raise your hand so I know which number? Or is it star nine? Raise your hand. All right, we'll go ahead and go with, um, Amber Serena. She's on Zoom. And Katie, if you hear me, I think you have to press star nine to raise your hand. Amber?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Amber Serena, one one four two six Southwest Hendrix Drive. So I just wanted to address what the mayor's talking about in reference to his text message to me the other day. He specifically asked if he, I just want to be clear when I'm. Going back through the text from him, so. It reads from him, hope you are well, just wanted you to know your tenants over the weekend were a bit loud one night. Also, your current tenants were loud last night. Could you please ask them to please hold the noise down at night? Thanks. I put quiet hours are posted. Okay, he says, should I go down and remind them of this or will you tell them? And then I put the quiet hours that are posted nine P M. to eight A M. I did not feel that I needed to express further what my private discussions were with my tenants. Okay, I feel that that was a bully comment and that he should not be threatening me. And trespassing on my land to harass my guests. Okay, that's, that's number one. Number two. R Vs on Hendrix Drive, there are three permanent living R Vs where people live. Year round in these R Vs, okay? That's allowed apparently, but it's not if my guests come in and their RV for a few days. Number three. I would like to know if the mayor called on the bridges, two doors down from me, with the wild parties. The twenty cars in the driveways. Every weekend, there is a party at the end of our little river. With a permanent structure set up where there's a party, music going on every weekend from our neighbors. Does he call on them? I don't think so. Did he call on Dave Hendrix next door to me who just had a big party over Memorial Day weekend? No, I don't think so. This is a personal vendetta, I have. No, I don't think so, this is a personal vendetta, I have been doing this since twenty thirteen, well before he ever decided to build a home and move here. I have a meeting with a very large law firm tomorrow. And I am left with no other recourse than to take this to a lawsuit. I'm not going to be personally harassed and singled out. And I live in an agricultural neighborhood. Not to mention. So if RVs are allowed, so be it. I'm okay with it, I'm not complaining about it, I'm not complaining that my neighbors are always throwing parties and loud music. That's what they do. I don't allow it. I have my hours posted, I am not going to be harassed. That's all I have to say.
Any others, Mandy?
Connecting her.
Hi, this is Katie, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, if you could speak up just a little bit.
Sure. This is Katie Geis, I live at one Q two zero five Palmetto Way. Um and you know, as I'm listening, the um attorney hand gave some pretty good advice at the beginning here that really resonated with me about um looking to the proposed bill as um a bit of boundaries or guidelines um into kind of safely taking a step towards regulation. And the second part was most impactful, which was truly staying focused on the pain points and the the issues and the heartburn that permanent residents um and STRs are feeling about this. And you know, when I hear that, I usually I hear noise and I hear parking and I hear bad behavior. And so it makes me think that there are ways that STR owners could be better neighbors for permanent residents. And we could find ways to get through this that are simple and straightforward and consistent and standard and don't introduce an overly burdensome um ways of uh, you know, assuming that we're going to have compliance with all rules and regulations and ordinances that clearly we know there will be challenges in in a million ways to disqualify a vacation rental. And so hearing that, you know, I haven't heard that we have a major problem with people that are uh dying in homes be- in vacation rental homes because they uh can't find their way out. And I'm not making light of a very serious situation there. Um nor have I really heard of problems with building codes. Those items seem uh to me to be putting up major obstacles to make it very difficult for vacation rentals to continue to operate. Um even ones that are, you know, attempting to do the very best that they can. And so um even, you know, going through the process of doing that, I don't know if anybody has tried to renew their passport or tried to get an uh driver's license recently, you you have a sense for how difficult it is to get with uh the county uh for just about anything, and clearly you know that it's very uh troubling when county says, no, I can't do it, I don't have the resources. And I think that that seems to be the situation here, that it's going to be obligating us to try to get compliance with something that is uh not even a viable pathway. Um as we know with with trying to get city resources or excuse me, county resources to help with um existing fire uh inspections. So I would just, you know, encourage us to start and keep it simple and be very straightforward on the things that really matter. Don't over regulate or put duplicate work in there if if the comprehensive code is going to be planning for it. But start simple with what the city can manage, and I know uh the city council uh deals with a lot of budgetary constraints and challenges and and frankly, we don't have the resources to do a lot of this, and so it really moves us to um be very lean in how we approach this and keep things as simple. Keep things as simple as possible. Thank you for your time.
I don't have anyone else on Zoom, I don't have anyone else signed up.
Okay, Dave.
Yeah, that already spoke.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Dave Porter, I live at one one eight three five East Blue Cove Drive in Dan Allen. The ordinance that was originally proposed for for short term rentals is consistent with more than fifty cities in the state of Florida. It's predominantly replicates a lot of state laws and rules. And so things you're proposing to take out tonight even are actually state rules. So exit lighting is in rule sixty-nine A, which is very specific for short term rentals. So you have to be kind of careful when you start taking things out to understand the state laws and rules. I think that the short term rental ordinance is to protect the safety of the people that rent and to protect the residents. I think it's offensive that we don't take on an ordinance just because we can't enforce it. I think Dan Allen and the residents of Dan Allen expect you to enforce what are our codes and ordinances. If not, give it up. Stop being a city. That's simple. I'm highly offended that our co- that our proposed ordinance, most of it are state laws and ordinances, and people are wanting to sue the city. Many of these fifty cities have been sued. Some of them lost only because they went above and beyond trying to prevent the actual uh ability to have short term rentals. Uh I've provided you a lot of those lawsuits and what the answers are. And a lot of them were responsive from the state attorney. So you can, you can maintain maximum occupancy. You can demand to have a fire inspection and a code inspection. Because they are businesses, that is in essence why you're making this ordinance under the business section of the comp plan. It's not an, it's not any kind of a debate. So so I would request that you continue to look at what is the state ordinance and state laws and and comply with that. Also, the state legislature this year, as every year for the last ten years have tried to renew and expand their laws, and it failed. The city of Indian Rocks Beach is where the primary senator is from that was driving this. They opposed his actions and two days after the Senate session was over, they enacted their own city ordinance two days later, which is very very similar to what we're proposing. So trying to guess what the Senate legislature will do in the next few years is ludicrous, nobody knows, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
I do have one more hand raised in Zoom.
Sure.
Sorry.
Hello.
Please state your name and address, please.
Okay, one two one one six Wakewa Circle, the name is Paula DePaula. I have four STRs around me that I know of, there might be more, three are on the river. I can see them, I can hear them. Every owner of these STRs has given me their telephone number to call them in case there are any problems, I thought that was very courteous. I've never had to call any of these owners in the last three or four years. About personal information, I'm not sure, but doesn't Airbnb, HomeAway, et cetera? Don't they gather that info when the renter registers? Um so I'm just wondering why we're asking for it twice. I do agree with Jan, let's leave this to the state, why are we making this more complicated? It's like making a city ordinance that children under fourteen can't drive a golf cart when that's already a law. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I appreciate all the effort tonight. Appreciate everybody working on this and we'll bring this up and start right where we ended up and keep going. Okay?
We're going to decide that in the future.
Do what now?
Is there a proposed date for the follow up meeting? Or do you want to decide it in the future?
Why don't we have a meeting next Wednesday, right? Already?
Right. The long one.
Yeah.
And a potential budget workshop the next, the very next week?
We have a budget workshop at three.
Next week.
On Wednesday next week and then our regular meeting at five thirty.
That's why I said it's a long meeting next Wednesday because the budget workshop is part of prior to the meeting.
Got it, thank you, I had the wrong date.
I would say we put this off to July to bring it back up. Uh that'll give you time to try to find out what you can about these inspections and what is required and not required. Um because we already have a meeting on the third, I believe. Yes?
Yes.
And we have a meeting on the twelfth, yes. And then we'll try to figure out maybe next month we're going to have another meeting. Okay?
Okay.
That sound good, everybody?
Good, thank you.
All right, so probably Wednesday, start thinking about when we can have another meeting in July on this on this subject. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Means adjourn.